I didn't have cookies.
Yeah, I'd like to call the order. Our meeting for May 3, 2022. Wow. Hannah, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I am the United States of America and to public which stands. I am invisible.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to report on the closed session action. In closed session by a vote of five to zero, the board took action to approve the following management reclassification: Anna Luna to intermediate school principal at Rainey Intermediate School. The effective date of the reclassification is July 1, 2022. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, I take great pleasure in congratulating Anna in your new reclassification, your appointment to Rainey. We're super excited. The work you've done at Garrettson is phenomenal, and we know you're going to bring the same spirit and energy to Rainey, so congratulations. And I know you travel deep, so you've got some friends here with you. Want to introduce the friends and family?
My family, my three kids. And my wonderful manager.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on here. I'll just do my real quick here. Welcome to our meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight. Before we begin, I'd like to review a couple of items. Governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board held in public, and although public participation is encouraged, it is not a meeting of the public. As a board president, it is my duty to carry out the meeting in an efficient and uninterrupted manner so that matters on the agenda are addressed and the business and operations of the district can seamlessly continue. It is also my duty to maintain an orderly, respectful, and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices, and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking out while other person has the floor. At the appropriate time on the agenda, I will recognize individuals wishing to provide public comment in accordance with Board Bylaw 9323. At that time, I will provide further guidelines regarding public comment. California Penal Code 403 states every person who, without authority of the law, willing flee, sorry, disturbs and breaks up any assembly or meeting that is not unlawful in its character, other than in an assembly or meeting referred to in Section 302 of the Penal Code of Section 18340 of the Elections Code, is guilty of a misdemeanor. Lastly, the California Department of Public Health strongly recommends masking indoors prevents the spread of COVID-19 variants. It continues to be our practice, and that CNUSD will follow CDPH guidance. Thank you and welcome to our meeting. At this time, the adoptions of the minutes. Can I have a motion for April 12, 2022, regular board meeting?
Remove.
Second.
Okay, Hannah? Okay, so please do your vote. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have special recognition, and so in order to present this, we'll start with the student recognition. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Morrow Keen, Board President of the Corona Norco Unified School District. Today, we have the privilege of honoring and recognizing our students of the month. Throughout this school year, administrators at our 52 schools nominate students to be recognized by our school board. These students are chosen based on academic achievement, leadership, or any other quality or characteristics that makes them stand out. We want to thank our parents and teachers for your role in guiding and supporting our students in their commitment to education. Congratulations, recipients. We are so proud of you. Keep up the great work.
Good evening. I am John Reynoso, Director in Student Services. On behalf of the Board of Education and the staff of the Corona Norco Unified School District, I would like to congratulate the following students for receiving the attendance recognition award. These students have worked very hard on their attendance and should be proud of their achievement. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Hannah Poor, the 2021 to 2022 student board member, and I attend Norco High School. The Board of Education student recognition awards are given to students who have demonstrated a high degree of achievement, dedication, or significant improvement in academics. Congratulations to all the recipients for your accomplishments. I wish you the best of luck in your future plans.
Thank you. At this time, we are now going to recognize the 2021-22 Riverside County Academic and Athletic Team Awards. In order to do this, may I have Renee Ramsey, please, our RCOE Coordinator of Leadership, Innovation, and Outreach. Thank you.
Superintendent from Nostro in our cabinet, I am excited to say that now I'm Renee McCain. Last year, I was Renee Ramsey, so I'm getting used to the new name. So thank you for having me here again tonight. Tonight, on behalf of the Riverside County Office of Education, we are here to award one Corona team and two Centennial High School teams on receiving a 2021-22 Academic Athletic Team Award. Oh, of course. So the Riverside County Office of Education initiated the Academic Athletic Team Awards 22 years ago to recognize some of the many successes our schools and to demonstrate the positive relationship between athletics and academics by recognizing the top academic athletic teams in all of Riverside County, which represents over 430,000 students. So from Corona High School, first, we'd like to thank Principal Ben Sanchez for having me here to recognize this achievement, and we'd like to also congratulate the Athletic Director Jeff Stevens for running a program that values scholar athletes. First, we'd like to recognize the girls volleyball team at Corona High School. They had the highest GPA reported for their sport with an overall 4.22 GPA. Congratulations. So if anybody from the team is here, I'd like to hand this over. Okay.
Panthers in the house. Here we come.
Right. Do you want to stay up here? Because I think afterwards, last time, the teams did pictures next to each other. So you want to stay up here? Is that okay? Okay. Okay. Do you want to do when the other two teams come up, or you do it right now? Okay. Yeah, no, it's your show.
All right. Ready? One, two. One more.
Congratulations. Absolutely.
Not to embarrass her or anything, but Ms. Bonema. I've known her since before she was born, and she's taller than me now. Wow.
That's up to you guys what you prefer to do. All right. Next, I would like to congratulate two teams from Centennial High School. First, I would like to congratulate Principal Dr. Burrell for having me here also to recognize this achievement, and we would also like to recognize Athletic Director Bill Gunn for running a program that also continues to value scholar athletes. The following two teams from Centennial High School had the highest GPA reported for their sport. First, I would like to acknowledge Boys Water Polo with a 3.84 GPA.
Centennial in the house.
Bees a little bit more, yeah. One, two, three. One. Awesome.
And I do hear the valedictorian from Centennial with a 4.93, I hear. Congratulations. Right. And I just want to say thank you for having me here tonight. I look forward to being here at the Board Meeting to recognize the winter sports and the spring sports. So, I'll see you guys soon. So, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, and thank you to Centennial and Corona High School.
So, how many AP classes would that be?
AP classes?
To get up to.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just getting straight A's and honors classes.
But it has to be weighted, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm talking AP.
Four, probably four. Insane.
It is insane. And she does sports, and it can well amount.
Once again, a big hand to our students from Corona and Centennial High School for their academics. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have presentations to the Board. First, we'll have a Special Forces Sports Foundation, and we're going to introduce Matt Lance for this presentation. Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Executive Cabinet and Board Members. Dr. B. Thank you, guys, for letting me come out and share about nonprofit that we've started.
with children with special needs, and at all levels, from school districts, local
Came up here, you know, developed here in Corona Norco, and we're pretty proud of it.
club sports, and universities is what we're getting into. But how it relates here to Corona Norco, again, this started here.
There's a video I'd like you guys all to see before we get into too much detail.
We did our first Special Forces Sports Day in 2019, and we'll be executing our next one, May 17, this month, which you are all invited. We'd love to have you all come out and take a look. It's going to be a pretty fantastic day. Some of the, we don't just want to, we're trying to develop and get past just the, we want it to be, cover the whole family. And so, we've invited parents this year. We've invited the Inland Regional Center. We've invited Bility Counts. We've invited ABC Hopes, another local nonprofit that works with children with special needs. Corona Police and Fire will be there. We really try and make it a whole community event and bring everybody in, and it's just, it's magic when you get a chance to see it. And, hold on, I'm sorry, I've got my notes. The other part you saw in that where you saw the volleyball, the soccer, and that, that's our after-school programming. So, when we get established in an area, we work then with club sports, and we do some after-school programming where we get the club athletes involved. But it really has its base in the school district and with our kids. And I have a, I had a surprise guest show up to support, and so, I wanted to give him a chance as part of this. Brandon McGee, he's a former Centennial athlete. He played at ASU, played in the, played some Major League Baseball, played in the NFL, and he's had a chance to come out and see some of our stuff. So, just kind of to see what an impact for, it's been for him.
Yeah. Just watching the video, it doesn't even do it justice. I was lucky and fortunate enough to have time to go visit when they were out there on the soccer fields. And I had this perspective, because I'm used to showing up, oh, I'm the guy that can help. Like, I'm the guy that they look to, like they aspire to be. But they helped me way more than anybody that I've ever came across. I was pushing a young man in a wheelchair, and his excitement just to be pushed, he didn't care who I was, what time of day it was, nothing. All he knew and all he felt was that I cared. So, there was no way I can let him post this on Instagram and not take time out of my day to tell everyone in here just how special this thing is led by this man. I'm telling you, y'all got to do whatever it takes to give him the resources it takes, because this thing is magical, guys. Magical. If you look at those smiles in that video, those are real smiles. In today's world, we need hope. We need that feel-good. I can't make it up. I had no speech planned. I'm just literally out here rumbling, because I don't even know what to say besides that it, my life, there's like a before and then after that event. And I've seen a lot of stuff, been a lot of places, and this day was the most impactful day I've ever had. So, please, listen to this man and show up if you can.
A little, you're awesome. Yeah. I wore this shirt today because this is our volunteer shirt. I wanted, there's a lot of intentionality in the program. As you know, some of our kids are nonverbal, and so, we, so Corona High's shirt is red with a white logo. It has a unifying logo, sponsors on the back. We have great sponsors. We have great donors for our program that help us keep this as a free event. That's the main thing. And a lot of people go, yeah, what's the catch? No catch. The foundation covers all of that stuff. And so, you know, when you look out into this sea of kids, you're going to see if some, well, number one, if you're going to see someone in a military green shirt, you know they're a volunteer. If you see a kid having a problem in a blue shirt with a white logo, well, you know that kid's at Norco, and you can get them to who they need to go to. So, you know, it has a unifying logo, but you can also tell each school apart based on the color of their shirt, so that, you know, just for safety for them. And, yeah, I think I just want to say, I hope to see you all out there on the 17th. I hope you guys have time in your schedule, and, yeah, it's going to be a special event. Do you guys have any questions?
First of all, Matt, where's the location?
Oh, sorry. Centennial High School.
Okay, thank you. At what time?
It's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the 17th.
And if anyone wants to help, how do they get ahold of you?
They can contact me on my website, specialforcesports.com. They follow on Instagram, but mainly the website. They can find all my contact information.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing. Ms. Evra?
I was going to say, where are we going?
Sorry. Bob is a Centennial PE teacher, so, of course, we're going to have it there.
You're a teacher in our district, obviously, and your principal is back there. She's beaming. Obviously, you're familiar with Victor's Bauer, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I don't, I remember when you were playing, and you were a pretty amazing young man. So does Bill. We were the idiots on the sideline cheering yon. But I don't know if you ever had the opportunity before this, because we rotated each year over at Victor's Bowers. We bring the football players, and you might have missed it when you were there, because we have so many schools. But Lisa and I were just there, and I think we've all been to it at one point or another. And, oh my gosh, it, you said it, young man. It is powerful. It is, and there are guys that are bigger than you even. And, you know, there was one, and Lisa and I were talking about, and I think he was a wide receiver, and this young girl was, kept biting his hand, and he was so good with her. He just would kind of go around, and it was beautiful to see, to the point where we both had to go up and just hug and love on him, because you might have to take over.
It was just, it touched our hearts to see the kids out there and truly give them some help that they wanted, and I think, like you said, they got it back. They got the love right back to them, and it was just an inspiring day, and even the kids that didn't participate wanted to come sit by them so we could take pictures. So, you know, whether they were playing or not, it was just amazing, and I know that you've been to some of those, too. Did you want to share out?
Well, I wanted to share on the 2019 event, because I was there. I was fortunate to be there, and the Victor's Bauer event is wonderful. This, in my opinion, like Brandon said, is magnified, because it has life skills students from all of our high schools, correct? And Victor's.
All of our high schools, middle schools, and adult transition will be there this year.
And so, and you walk on the football field, and you see, you know, the different colored shirts representing the different colored schools. You see the student athletes there, and like Brandon said, it's magic, and it's like, who's, who is this for? Who's getting more out of it? And so, and I've been fortunate to know Matt for a long time, and I know his heart, and I've seen this from the infancy, blow up, and I'm hoping that our district can support this. I'm hoping that we could all go, because it's just a fantastic event. It is life-changing, and the impact that it has on the students, all of our students, I think, is incredible. So, and I've been able to go to some of the after-school programs at Forza, see the volleyball and see the Nothing But Nets. You know, we just have the state championship basketball team there, and most of those students were helping the, you know, the special needs students at Centennial play basketball. And so, you, you know, I know you're humble, but you've done amazing things, and I'm hoping that this will take off for, I don't know why you picked Utah State. I mean, come on, come on.
I'm an Aggie.
I know, I know. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But, you know, we have Cal Baptist, we have UCR, so hopefully, this will pick up momentum. You know, we lost a little bit in the pandemic, but congratulations. What can we, what can we do as a district to help you out?
The biggest hurdle, because again, being that I am, you know, in this arena, I am an outside, you know, entity, being a nonprofit, and, you know, this doesn't come from within the district. I got my own 501(c)(3), and so, there's hurdles such as, you know, transportation, which, by the way, you guys took care of this year. It's amazing. I just got the confirmation email today that all the schools will be bused out, and that's super helpful. And the reason we do it on a school day is so that we can get 100% of the kids come. You do it on a weekend, you do it after school. Now, families' calendars get in the way, things like that. If we can do it on a school day during school time, I get 100% of the kids that we reach out to. And also with the, you know, tying in with the high school, all of the athletes, they're there, you know, and so, the basketball team, the volleyball team, the football team, they're all there, and it's really what makes it, it sets it apart from anything else that you could do outside of school. So, that's huge. Transportation, and then, and we all know it's a headache, but, and then, with the, when we do these, we want to get the kids involved. There's not enough for our kids after school. You know, the parents, when I sit in IEPs, they're begging for things. What can my kids do outside of school? And so, that's why we went to the Nothing But Nets, you know, club things, and, you know, to be able to send flyers out to the district, to our kids, so that they know about it, reaching out to them, you know, hoping they follow us on social media, that's rough, but if I can, if I could promote those, and really, you know, I'm in the district, I know the teachers, but, you know, we're all trying to be rule followers, and, you know, if it's an outside entity, it's got And, oh my gosh, it, it, you, you said it, young man. It is powerful. It is, and, and there are guys that are bigger than you even. And, uh, you know, it was, there was one and Lisa and I were talking about, and, uh, I think he was a wide receiver and this, um, young girl was, uh, kept biting his hand. Um, and he was so good with her. Um, he just would kind of go around and, and it was beautiful to see to the point where we both had to go up and just hug and love on him because the, you might have to take over.
It was just, it, it touched our hearts to see the kids out there and, and truly give them some help that they wanted. And I think, like you said, they got it back. They got the love right back to them and, and it was just an inspiring day and, and even the kids that didn't participate wants to come sit by them so we could take pictures. So, you know, whether they were playing or not, it was just amazing. And I know that you've been to some of those too. Did you want to share out?
Well, I, I wanted to share on the 2019 event because I, I was there. I was fortunate to be there and the, the Victor's Bauer event is wonderful. This, in my opinion, like Brandon said, is magnified because it has life skills students from all of our high schools, correct? And Victor's.
All of our high schools, middle schools, and adult transition will be there this year.
And so, and it's, and you walk on the football field and you see, you know, the different color shirts representing the different color schools. You see the, the student athletes there and, and like Brandon said, it, it's magic. And it's like, who's, who's, who is this for? Who's getting more out of it? And, and so, and, you know, and I've been fortunate to know Matt for a long time and I know his heart and, and I've seen this from the infancy, blow up and, and I'm hoping that our district can support this. Um, I'm hoping that we could all go because it's just a fantastic event. It, it is life-changing and the impact that it has on the students, um, all of our students, I think is incredible. So, um, and I've been able to go to some of the after-school programs at Forza, see the volleyball and see the Nothing But Nets. Uh, you know, we just have the champ, the state championship basketball team there and most of those students were, were helping the, you know, the, the special needs students at Centennial play basketball. And so, you, you know, I know, I know you're humble, but, but you've done amazing things and, and I'm hoping that this will take off for, you know, I don't know why you picked Utah State. I mean, come on, come on.
I'm an Aggie.
I know, I know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But, you know, we have, we have, we have Cal Baptist, we have UCR. So hopefully, this will pick up momentum. You know, we lost a little bit in the, the pandemic, but congratulations. What can we, what, what can we do as a district to, to help you out?
The biggest hurdle, because again, being that I am, you know, in, in this arena, I am a, I'm an outside, you know, entity, being a nonprofit and, you know, this doesn't come from within the district. I got my own 501(c)(3) and so, um, there, there's hurdles such as, you know, transportation, which, by the way, you guys took care of this year. It's, it's amazing. I just got the confirmation email today that, that all the schools will be bused out. Um, and that's super helpful. And the reason we do it on a school day is so that we can get 100% of the kids come. You do it on a weekend, you do it after school. Now, families' calendars get in the way, things like that. If we can do it on a school day during school time, I get 100% of the kids that we reach out to. And also with the, the, you know, tying in with the high school, all of the athletes, they're there, you know, and, and so the, the basketball team, the volleyball team, the football team, they're all there and, uh, it's really what makes it, it sets it apart from anything else that you could do outside of school. Um, so that's huge. Um, transportation and then, and we all know it's a headache, but, and then, um, with the, when we do these, we want to get the kids involved. There's not enough for our kids after school. You know, the parents, when I sit in IEPs, they're, they're begging for things. What can my kids do outside of school? And so that's why we went to the Nothing But Nets, you know, club things and, you know, to be able to send flyers out to the district, to our kids so that they know about it, reaching out to them, you know, hoping they follow us on social media, that's rough. But if I can, if I could promote those, um, and, and really, you know, I, I'm in the district. I know the teachers, but, you know, we're all try to be rule followers and, you know, if it's an outside entity, we, it's got to be cleared. And so if we could be cleared, uh, as a nonprofit through the district to hand out flyers and get the information out, that would also be, be huge. Those are definite ways you could help.
So we'll bring that to the communications department and Dr. B will continue to follow up on that. But thank you for sharing that. We appreciate it. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we have another presentation to the board. Uh, CNUSD School and Community Safety Initiative, a collaborative and comprehensive plan. And so at this time, I'd like to have Dr. Reggie Tompkins, please come up and...
Thank you, Mrs. Marakine. As Dr. Goines and our awesome, uh, Eastville Middle School and, um, high school principals come up, um, to preface the presentation, the, the why behind the presentation is that we've seen an uptick similar to, um, many districts across the nation locally. We've seen an uptick in some student conduct post-pandemic, even though we're still coming out of that. Um, and our principals got together and decided we needed to be proactive. Um, in one area of our district, we look at our whole district, uh, safety, um, plan altogether, but there's been some specific incidents that have occurred in Eastville and they wanted to get together to be proactive and create a, a community approach, um, along with an internal approach. So, Dr. Goines and the team.
Thank you much, much, Dr. Tompkins, and, and thank you, uh, board and executive cabinet for having us. Uh, we are here today because there, there have been some concerns, right? There, there have been, uh, we've seen additional behaviors post-pandemic that we didn't see before pandemic. And that's a very real thing and we know that it's happening across our district. And so today, um, although these things are happening across our district, we're here as a team from the city of Eastville as kind of a microcosm of, of the larger district and some concerns are raised, and so we're gonna chat about those today. Uh, Eastville is an, an amazing community, um, and it, it really is, we, we're honored to serve all our communities. Eastville i- is unique. We have got a very plugged-in, uh, social media savvy, uh, families that really care about their students and what's going on in the community. We, it's known as one of the best places to live and one of the safest places i- in the country and they've got this awesome park system. And so there are a lot of positives there and there are also our, our challenges with all of those parks. When our students leave our campuses, they've got lots of places to, to go. That's a good thing, uh, when it's structured. When it's unstructured, it can be bad, right? Especially with the extra behaviors we're seeing. And then on our campuses, we've got lots of, um, we've got counselors, we've got security, we have police, uh, support, we have administrators, teachers, everyone building relationships off our campuses. We don't have all those levers. So, uh, so we're gonna talk today about kind of what's happening on our campuses and I've, I've brought wonderful people here to, to talk about that. And I'll start with, um, Dr. Anderson, principal of Eleanor Roosevelt High School, to talk about what's going on on our campuses.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to point out that there's, obviously with all the challenges that we have, there's a lot of good things, great things going on in our campuses right now, amazing things. Um, just this past weekend for us at Roosevelt, we were able to hold our first prom since 2019, um, and had over 1,500 students there, a great night. Band competitions at the middle school level, high school level, um, both River Heights and Ramirez being able to offer school dances for the first time in a long time and had, what, more than double the normal attendance. What that shows also though is that they're, we're hungry. Our kids are hungry for those things and some of those experiences. So as we've started to get back to some of those experiences, um, I can speak for myself at the high school level, we're starting to see things kind of settle down a little bit, right? Kids are able to be more involved, um, but that doesn't mean that we don't have some challenges. So we're gonna talk a little bit about some of those challenges. So, this is done.
So one of the, one of the challenges, we're so excited to start, um, offering some of the normal things post-pandemic to our students, but we're also noticing kind of a phenomenon that we've noticed with all of our colleagues throughout the district K-12, is that our kiddos this year were seeing some typically lacking social skills, um, some of those soft skills that aren't the academic skills and especially as they come into relationships. Um, some of the things that we've been talking about is behaviors that you might consider more elementary in behavior, um, running around chasing after each other, trying to grab each other's shoes, grabbing each other's backpacks, and then somebody winds up down on the ground. Um, another example is walking through crowded hallways, um, where in previous years kiddos would bump each other's shoulders. They might just walk on by or say, "Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me." Now it leads to a conflict, an immediate conflict. It's, it's some of those skills, maybe because of the pandemic, that they were in a virtual environment, um, that they just don't have those conflict resolution skills to kind of, um, immediately navigate through. We also attribute it to, we work really hard to do transition programs for our students, especially as they transition from the seventh grade and, or the sixth grade into seventh grade and from eighth grade into ninth grade. Our kiddos didn't get those opportunities and so they kind of missed some of those. They were, um, one day in elementary and the next time they're in a school building, now they're in, uh, junior high or in high school. So we've just seen that some of those soft skills, some of those social skills are really lacking and usually they kind of, um, learn them and develop them a lot quicker. This time, we're still seeing some of those behaviors and it's now, um, in May. So especially as it relates to conflict resolution. And then kind of the given that we always have, um, students that are troubled, that are either dealing with mental health issues or have some trauma in their life. As we're coming back from the post, um, the pandemic, we're seeing, you know, losses, um, students that had to relocate because of financial, uh, probably, uh, job losses. So a, a lot of our kiddos are hurting and they don't know kind of what to do with that and then you put that social interaction on top of it, we're kind of having to relearn some of those behaviors. So we're working hard to do that.
All right, good evening. So I know that we are all very much aware that our young adults' peer groups mean a lot to them and their social interactions are extremely important amongst the chagrin to adults and to their parents and so forth. And in that time of the last two years, we've had students who were home by themselves and missing and longing for that social interaction. And unfortunately, their only way for that is through social media, through their TikToks, through Instagram. And, and in all that experience, as we all know, in social media, we present an image. Now, the challenging part and developmentally is that we figure out who we are as a reflection from other people and that, that visual interaction, how we do our conflict mediation, how we build relationships, most of that is in person. We, we see nonverbal. We see the body language. We learn and we grow from that. But in social media, I'm putting up an image that looks pretty darn good, but I may not feel that inside, right? And so there's a piece of that authenticness and our genuineness that gets lost and so I'm marrying that with other people and they're doing the same thing. And so we come and we're greeted and, and we're at the school and I still don't really know who I am and I'm marrying that with somebody else who doesn't know who they are. And so that kind of breeds to the challenges of how do we deal with each other? How do we function? How do I, how do I say, "Oh, my bad?" when I'm doing that? And then, and then the other piece is, you know, our kids just don't want to miss out. And part of that missing out is their phone and they will, they will go and hustle so they can get the video, so they can see it because they don't want to miss out and they want to get the likes because that's how they're popular, is through the likes. Social media likes, not my likes. And it's a really different, it's a different flow. So that sets the part of the stage of where we are.
And so knowing that, uh, that we have these challenges, we have to have a plan for action. And so, uh, very briefly, our plan is, first of all, uh, our students need accountability and, uh, we have guidelines, we have education code, and so we, we make sure we reinforce those things. We continue to educate, uh, students on pro-social behaviors, these behaviors, we're talking about that. We, we have lessons for all students. In fact, we're, we're creating some additional lessons because of the things we've seen in our community. Uh, it's security and law enforcement, you hear from, from them very, very briefly, but they have been awesome partners. Um, we're starting a tip line. We already have a tip line for suicide awareness, so we're adding an additional tip line for any other type of, of issues we're in the community. Uh, increased school messaging. We just got a letter out from all of these three principals to the whole Eastville, um, secondary community and, and then really bringing our parents in as partners. And that doesn't stop this year. Next year, we continue. We've got a discipline guideline committee that's already working. Um, we're gonna be teaching expectations at all of our campuses, uh, not just Eastville, all of our campuses, digital citizenship about social media at all of our campuses, anti-bullying training from our administration and our counselors. And then, um, continuing with our campaigns on mental health and kindness and then bringing parents in as additional supports, groups like watchdogs, we've had at multiple sites. And I'll bring it to Steve Ellis to talk about our law enforcement partners.
The Harupa Community Service District, also known as JCSD, contracts with the Sheriff's Department for a park ranger. The Sheriff's Department and JCSD has both committed that they will have a park ranger presence, presence at the community center throughout the end of the school year during dismissal. In addition to that, Lieutenant Boyd, who's also the acting police, I shouldn't say acting, but the, uh, police chief of the city of Eastville, uh, he's gonna allocate resources to have deputies at all our parks as well where kids normally congregate, just have a deterrent there for their presence as well. In addition to that, Sergeant Tyson is, is gonna allocate and sign the SROs to the parks as well to, uh, supplement those efforts as well in their absence.
And so, Dr. Anderson?
I get two introductions. Thank you, Dr. Goines. Um, so one of the things too that we're appealing and we're, we're really hoping, uh, to, to further our partnerships with our parents and, and some of the things that we're looking for, um, from our parents are, is that student pickup time. So not so much that you have to pick your student up, but make sure that there's a structure for them after school, whether the expectation is that they walk home, whether that expectation is that they're in a sport or that they are getting picked up and dropped home because, or taken somewhere, even if it's going to a friend's house because as we all know, um, idle time and idle hands leads to trouble at times, right? Um, positive social media presence, and what we mean by that is not only for our kids and working with our kids to teach them that, but also as parents moni- uh, monitoring, monitoring that on a regular basis, but also modeling that on a regular basis. Um, what does it mean to be a positive social media presence? Um, what does it mean when we post, uh, we, you know, we, when we see videos posted, it can be problematic because sometimes those videos get posted, they might be two or, literally two or three years old. Or people write their own narrative and as I like to say, the legend grows from there, right? Like you, you, uh, often there's a false narrative that gets spread around some of those videos. Um, parent involvement, as Dr. Goines mentioned, with watchdogs and other groups, not to mention, um, there's a, um, one of our parents in, in Eastville who is working on organizing a, um, a parent group outside to help monitor parks and, and be present and have some adult presence at some of those areas. Um, community behavior expectations, those are the partnerships that we talked about with, um, JCSD and so on and us working together in partnership with them to be consistent and clear with those expectations. And then ultimately asking parents to reach out to us before that legend grows, so to speak, be, you know, reaching out to us to let us work together, um, to, to help kind of stop some of these issues before they become bigger or if they are already big, to stop them from becoming bigger. Um, so those are, those are really what we're looking for from our parents.
So in, in closing, before we take questions, just, uh, you know, we, we have great, great school district, we have great schools, uh, we have a great community a- and all our cities and our unincorporated, incorporated areas. And we are just really looking, uh, to, to partner as we all together, uh, make sure this community is as safe as it can be and our students are, are acting a- as they should be out in the community. And we will, we thank you for your time. We'll take your questions.
Um, so can you share with the public why this is created and were some of the major incidents that just happened recently so that they're aware of why we're focusing on Eastville first? And it, it will eventually trickle down to the other districts. We, I mean, other schools in our district, we know that. But why are we pinpointing Eastville?
Yeah, specifically, we've had some incidents at, you know, maybe at the community center, at local parks where students have gone, there have been, uh, you know, fights, something recorded, posted on social media. And as Dr. Anderson says, the legend grows, some, we get information back that's not factual. We, uh, you know, and, um, and, and it creates fear and we understand that. We want our kids to act right in the community. And so, um, that, that's really the, the genesis of this in Eastville, but it is the work that's happening everywhere.
And I, I want to thank the, the police department, oh, and thank you sheriff department, excuse me, that you guys are out there. I, I got word of that like two weeks ago that, uh, and of course, J- JCSD also involved with this as well. Thank you, Steve. And also now you principals, thank you, thank you for now communicating with the public because now city council's calling me too. And so we want to work together and that's the whole deal is that we're working together to keep our kids safe and feel safe when they walk home. And, and that's the thing because we still want the kids to walk. We don't want to have this congestion. We don't have room for congestion right now, so. But the thing is that we appreciate that you stepped up and that we want to continue this process and then, more importantly, teaching the children that this is not acceptable behavior. My colleagues?
I just want to thank you for, for the initiative of, of doing this and the, the partnership. I, I think that's, that's just always been a key partner. How can we partner within the community? And not, not only within the community, um, but within our schools. And so, you know, we have three principals here and, and, and I think that that's great, the, the partnership within the district as well as within the community. So I just, um, applaud you guys and be, we'll be interested in here, to your updates on how that's going so we can take it to the rest of the district.
Well, thank you for, uh, putting this group together. I, I said group because I, I figured you passed the conversation, right? You get the conversation, you get reflected the problem, now you're going to into action. Is there a structure? Do you have a group? Is there a, a meeting set up to talk about this or are, are these still in the conversation planning stage?
Good question. Now, we, we are an active group that we have been meeting. There also have been meetings with other community partners, again, uh, with, with the, the sheriff's department, JCSD. And so, yes, we are in action mode.
That's good. Thank you.
And then, um, I know Ms. Marakine said it, but, uh, obviously, we do a lot in the rest of our cities. Um, we have Temuscal Valley, um, Corona, Norco. So we're a little bit ahead of the game here in, in Eastville, but there has been a little bit more excitement there. We'll just call it that, right? Um, but my hope is, and I'm including the, the sheriffs in there because you guys work really well with Corona PD and obviously you're, you cover Norco. So, um, I, the, the brain trust, if you will, here, I, I, I'm hoping, and, and I think this is somewhat to, to your question, Dr. Lausis, um, you know, we, we get a good model, let's make sure that we share the model. The do's and quite frankly, sometimes it's more important the don'ts. This didn't work. Don't do this one. Do these three here. So, um, appreciate all of you being here, taking your time out and, uh, quite frankly, looking, looking out for our kids. That's what we are about. So you guys are doing that and doing it well. Thank you.
Last but not least, thank you for what you do and I just wanted to say, Dr. Montgomery, I thought it was all about the likes. How many you get? Um, I just have a quick... So this, this team, is it, um, just personnel and sheriff or are you bringing parents in to be part of this group?
That's a good question. We have, um, some parent structures and we, we're utilizing feedback from those structures. You know, Dr. B has his parent, his parent group and his advisory. And so the more we can hear from those groups and utilize those current groups, the, the better we are. Uh, you know, again, it's a community deal, so, so absolutely.
Um, yes, because parents want to be involved in things like this and we need to give them, we need to give them a voice. Thank you.
And I especially like you working with city council because they want a partnership with us. And so again, if there's anything we could do on this side, let us know too as well. But please continue to communicate with the parents through your media or however you're doing that and I appreciate you guys stepping up. So thank you again. Any more questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Marakine, and, um, a great, great presentation, um, by, um, Dr. Tompkins, Jeremy and team, right? So, great job. The, um, uh, this month in May is, is mental health, uh, month. We're gonna start with a student video, the superintendent's presentation, and we're gonna finish with, with another video. And this is, um, we wanted to bring a student voice, which is so important, so.
Mental health is so crucial and we shouldn't shy away from discussing it and getting the help we need. I personally struggled with my own mental health issues and thankfully, I was... I personally struggled with my own mental health issues, and thankfully, I was able to use the voice I have to speak up and get the help I need.
If you're struggling, or if someone you know may be struggling, just contact a parent, talk to your counselor, siblings, friends, anywhere.
Your mental health is something that is very important, and it's something that you should take care of.
And to be able to look out for each other, look out for ourselves, and be the best that we can be.
I strongly encourage any and everyone who's struggling with mental health issues to use their voice and speak up and get the same help they need.
Thank you so much, communications, and of course, our students for putting this together. So, a couple of highlights, we have Cassandra Willis was selected Woman of Distinction, and she was recognized on Saturday, April 30th, in a virtual ceremony by Sabrina Cervantes of the 60th Assembly District for her accomplishments and continued commitment to our community. May is also Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so, we will be bringing a resolution next month, next, excuse me, next board meeting on the 17th. May 5th, we had this presentation this evening about the Armed Forces Program over at Centennial, May 5th is our track and field event at Roosevelt, and it includes our students with disabilities, so I want to thank Becky Weaver, our Assistant Principal for organizing, and I would like to invite the whole community to come out, and that's from four to seven, it's after school, and come out and support one of the very best events that we have all year. May 11th is National School Nurse Day. JFK, I want to give congratulations to JFK for being recognized as one of the top California high schools for the 2020, excuse me, for the 2223 Race to the Summit Campaign, and JFK is among 24 high schools with the highest financial aid application completion rates in the state of California. Also, JFK found out today that they were awarded a six-year WASC accreditation status through June 30th of 2028, thank you. So, congratulations to the entire staff and Dr. Petrea Gonzalez. Centennial High School was recently selected for the 2022 California Pivot Practice Award winner by the State Superintendent Tony Thurman, and this award was designed to celebrate districts and schools that have completed an online application highlighting the innovative practice that was implemented during the 2021 school year, when California required schools to offer distance learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so congratulations, Principal Burrell. Now, FBLA, Roosevelt High School students recently placed third in the nation, they were number one in the state of California, and so, our FBLA national, or went to the national championships, so congratulations to all the members for competing in this enormous challenge, so, great job to the Mustangs. The Festival of Arts is virtual this year, and it will, it would be launched on the district website on Wednesday, May 4th, for public viewing, the theme of this year is "I Believe", and we have nearly 800 entries across all grade levels. Also, before I show one last video on mental health, I want to call Tracy Payne to come up here and give us a short, brief update on our COVID dashboard, so Tracy?
Thank you, Dr. B, good evening, President Merrickine and board members, just a brief update on our COVID numbers, I'm pleased to report that our dashboard reflects 87 active cases, 63 students and 24 staff members, we have a small hotspot in Eastville, we've seen in the Roosevelt area where we have 19 cases of students and three staff, that's nowhere near what we were at with the Omicron variant in January, just some numbers to report for comparison, on intake, that was over Christmas break, on what was received in our office and reported to Public Health, 48, 46, so 4,846 cases compared to the month of April with 191, so we are definitely in a different position. The case rate in the county is 6.9 per 100,000, so again, slight uptake, but as we hear in the news, based on the Omicron variant, 60% of our population have had an active virus or had the vaccine, so we're in a much better position. Includes my report.
Thank you, Tracy. So, at this time, again, May being Mental Health Awareness Month, I'd like to show a video, before I do, so I was reminded today at the Riverside County Office of Education celebrating Educators Luncheon by the last recipient, which was the California Teacher of the Year, how her role, she mentioned, is to provide opportunities to bring her students together, so they can connect and learn together in person, and I think we're doing a great job out there, we can do more, and that's, obviously, the presentation we just witnessed is an example of that, so with that, we're going to show you this video.
Do you want to pick your own talking chip, or you're going back to mine?
I'll just go back to this one. So, what is the scariest memory you've had from like the past or anything like that?
Scariest thing that's like happened to you?
It was probably when my grandpa had a seizure in front of me.
I was almost kidnapped when I was six.
My grandma got pancreatic cancer, I was probably, I don't know, like five, six, seven-ish, and we were in Vegas, and I was in like this, we were in the store, and my family left me as a joke, they just walked out and just hid, and I was bawling my eyes out, I was so scared.
Restorative practices and circles are part of our Tier One Plan to ensure that every student in Corona Norco Unified School District really gets connected to their school, to their community, and then if things happen, they have a place and a space where they can really feel reconnected.
I think one of the biggest benefits for me as a teacher was that circles gave me an opportunity to not only get to know my students better, but for students to know students better, you know, just by virtue of people being in the same space doesn't guarantee that we're connected.
What I like the most about circles is that it allows everyone to share.
We all know the students that always know the answer and have their hands up, and they always get the opportunity to speak, but there's also the quiet ones that might need a little more processing time, and sometimes, you know, they kind of fall by the wayside, so I feel like with circles, it really kind of opens that up, and it helps you to learn something about somebody else.
Without the circles, we might not know like what stuff they're going through and stuff, so like, it helps us be more like empathetic to them.
It definitely helps, especially like, I came into the school last year with not a lot of friends.
I definitely got to know everyone better, there is people in the beginning of the year where I didn't really talk to them, but now because of circles, I've gotten to go closer to them.
So, circles ensures that every student gets to speak and to share, and every student in the class has a voice, and I think that's really fantastic, it really helps to make each and every student feel valued, and it builds community in our classrooms.
Having the opportunity to have kiddos come out and come into a different environment, it's a positive connection to school, so it's being able to work through and manage anything that they may not feel safe at home to talk about, so this is really a safe space for all of my students.
Yeah, I feel better about them, they're easier to like do, and yeah, because it's like a habit now, we do like almost every week.
It helps, like with your social anxiety, talking to people, and it's just a good thing to make friends and learn about your friends.
For me, a lot of it is, it's just validating them as humans, and it helps me to know how I can better help them.
It definitely helps, it could build a relationship with your student, I think me and Ms. Cohen have a very good relationship, because we understand each other, and we know more about each other because of the circles.
Like, I don't have to tell them all the stuff, I can tell them a little bit for them to know like what's going on in my life.
It empowers them, I feel like, to really see somebody else's point of view, which really helps with collaborative learning.
All right, we're going to do a move and break for this next bit, check in, how are you feeling about these exponent properties that we've been working on for a while? I'm trouble loss, if that's you, you're going to head over to the back corner, exponent property, someone else, that's going to be the back corner over there, go ahead and move, 30 seconds to move.
If they're absent, I would teach them what we did, like the other day that we had this class.
You know, I kind of explain to them how like exponent works, you know, like it's kind of mistakes someone would make, and like how you're actually supposed to do it, and like different ways to show it and write it.
And it's really contributed to their being more comfortable, working together, and helping each other out, and asking each other for help.
For classes that do, the students are much more engaged and more willing to learn.
In different classes, like we're almost like by ourselves in our own island.
It's nice to just be able to get up once in a while, and just like see where you're at and where others are at, and it's really nice to know that if you're like struggling, then there's lots of people in the same boat as you.
But now that I'm starting to get more comfortable with it, I've been asking a lot more questions lately, and I've been really into the math more, instead of like just dazing off and doing other things on my computer, I've been paying attention more, getting really good at it.
It's also really helped me, because I get to see in immediate moments, who gets
it, who doesn't, who's struggling, who's scared, who's nervous, both in like the general just kind of how are you feeling kind of way, so that way I know who might need a little check-in, or if it's more content focused, I can notice, ooh, you've totally got this, you're good to go, or, ooh, there's a lot of people who still don't get this, I need to reteach that bit.
As you build the climate, you build the culture, it really does have an extremely positive impact on student learning, so we want to make sure our students are happy, we want to make sure our staff is happy, they feel supported, but that they have that space to deal with some of the things that can turn into barriers for them, for their learning, and also, you know, for teachers, making sure they can reach all those students the best way they can.
So, thank you to our Communications Department and our Student Services for creating this comprehensive student wellbeing campaign, especially during the month of May, which is Mental Health Month, but really, it's throughout the year, so great job, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Merrickine.
Thank you, Dr. B.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is that okay? Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Bonroso, I just, I want to say thank you for getting that information out, and you sent it to us in the board mail out, you know, so those videos were, we had the links there, and you mentioned some of the things that are going on, mental health awareness wise, is that going to be made available to the public? Because there's a lot of good information, and I think, you know, we were the ones, only who got it, and I think our parents need to know, you talked about the training provided to our site administrators and security staff regarding fentanyl and Narcon administration, and I think that's important information for our public to know what is available at our schools in case this happens, and then, you know, those videos on the wellness rooms and the circles and all that, it's just so important, we need to raise that awareness, and I'm glad that you sent it, and it's there, but we need to make sure that the public knows, our community knows, our students know, I love that short but sweet video by the students, that was perfect, but we need to raise that awareness, that's what it is, mental awareness that we have to do, and so, I just, what's planned to get it out, I guess?
Yeah, so, I'm going to have Dr. Tompkins jump in, but before I do so, I can definitely share these videos on our Friday Communications to the Community, and we'll work with Brittany and the communications staff and get it up.
And just piggybacking on what Dr. Bonroso talked about, we are looking at taking the approach of that campaign approach, Mr. Pollack, because I think it's not just showing it once, it's getting it out there, making it available, and putting it out there again during presentations at the sites, and continue to increase that awareness across the board, so, the team is planning for that, we are definitely looking to increase that communication and keep it moving forward, and it's all year long, it's not just, this is constant for us, so we want to make sure that it is an emphasis district-wide.
Great, thank you so much.
Hannah, can I ask you a question? How does this work on your campus?
So, usually, from what I've heard, there are multiple students that will go up to the counselors, and they'll go and they'll talk about, there's also a calm room that we have at Norco, so basically, students can go and they can just relax, I've never really seen anything at like the circles at my school, but I feel like the calm room is a big one over at Norco.
Thank you, Mr. Pollack.
What would be the best way to get the word out to the students that this is available?
I feel like you need to make something, almost intriguing to the students, like catching, TikTok is a huge, huge social media platform that has always just, I feel like any videos on TikTok will really catch students' eyes, so if you can make any kind of, yeah, video that stands out, even the video that we just saw on the report, maybe that would work, anything like that.
I think we need to get information from our students on what's gonna, how they're going to get that.
Okay, I think Brittany caught that. Thank you, anything else?
Yeah, well, you know, when I watch it, what's being highlighted is the word circles. I think for me, so there's no lost opportunity for putting together a short video like that, there has to be some words that connect with them, like doing circles, what am I, sense of belonging, and kids will pick it up and watch it, not circles, circles is a technique, but there's something that governs that, like knowing who they are in relation to other kids around them, you know, those magic elevator words that they can remember, relevant experiences, or autonomy, my interests being, they're interested in me because they respect my interest, my values, my sense of belonging, all of those magic words that should be on, for me, it's just, it's good in a sense, but I want something that people can hang on, like, oh, that's really good, that's making me feel that I belong in this class, that I'm knowing who I am in relation to other kids around me, that what we do are relevant to my experiences, and that I'm being valued, you know, those things.
Thank you, Dr. Laus, Mr. Z.
Go ahead, Mary.
I think this is for our students, so we have to do something that the students are going to like, like she said, TikTok, I don't even know how to get on TikTok, but kids do, and that's what they're going to look at, it's not for me as the parent or the grandparent, it's for the kids that we're trying to reach, and if we're going to say circles, they know what that means, so I think we have to do something that's going to be appealing to them, and I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about the kids and what's appealing to them.
Thank you.
We did one, what, about three weeks ago, you and I, we didn't know we were going to be doing it, we just, I don't remember what school we were visiting.
Sierra Vista.
Sierra Vista, okay, just happened to be a room we were visiting, and it's pretty powerful, you can call whatever you want, but you and I do public speaking all the time, we all do up here, but I had a little sense of, ooh, I'm in front of all these youngins here, what do I want to say? But once we started, and really what helped me, and you and I talked a little bit about it, but it was kind of funny, after listening to some of them being so real and transparent, and saying things that, you know, really giving up themselves, I, it was like, what am I worried about? And there were a couple kids, as you recall, that they, you just throw the thing, and ends up everybody gets to do it at the end of the day, I think we had two kids, as I recall, that said pass, and then it went back to them, it gave them more time, they were more comfortable, to my point, they were more comfortable, and everyone shared, and there was one child in there, I don't know if you heard me say this, because we did have a counselor with us that I had some concerns with, on, I'm not even going to say whether it was a male or female, the answers, a couple answers that I heard, and the counselor agreed with me, not because I was a school board member, because the counselor heard the same thing I did, and I said, please do an individual checkup with the child, so, the circle stuff, it's powerful, probably now more than it could ever be in our history of education, I'm kind of sad to hear that, Hannah, you haven't done it, because I think you would really enjoy it, and I think you would find out things about people you feel like you know well, I'll say well, but I think you would even make better connections, deeper connections, things that you could talk about that would really help one another, because I don't care who you are, we're all struggling, still, we're coming out of it, it's much better, but the more we can talk to each other, the better we can be, and Bill, I appreciate you, I was going to wait till the board report, but I think this really is the appropriate time. But I, I think this really is the appropriate time to, to be addressing this since we've gone through somewhat presentation. So the more we can do it, I think the, the better. And hopefully you can get a, a team together, not like us, to Mary's point. Yeah, Hannah, I think would be a, a, a great input. But I'd also like to, and take this the right way, Hannah, maybe some students that are really struggling that, you know, sometimes we, like Hannah, she's the cream of the crop. But we, we need to make sure that we're, is this gonna work for here and here? So I'm done, but I think I made my point, sorry.
Mrs. Marukin, if I could just say a little bit, I've been updated. We're, we're going with the competition, Instagram reels is what the platform that we're gonna use. But I'm sure, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at the TikTok platform too, to see who's, who's taking a look at it. But I was just updated on that. So we, they are moving, that group, they're the techie group, they really are. So they just updated me and, so we are moving in that direction.
Mrs. Marukin, before we move on, and I did want to comment to what John was saying. As an administrator for, I was counting, I think this is my 25th or 26th year as, as administrator, I'm really proud of the work that our schools are doing across the board. And I'm really proud of the work that our, their counselors are doing, working with administration and working with the teachers and collaboration. The school that, Sierra Vista, that Mr. Z was talking about, you see a school that is healthy. Healthy in the sense that it is strategic across the board. Classrooms are healthy. And healthy means that there's issues, like all of us, but they're able to talk about it. And they have safety nets and, and students are empowered and they're engaged. And when you see that, it's, it's beautiful because you, people can relax. And, and I left there, and John, you may remember, we're having a conversation that I said, back when we were in school, we walked into a, they break up the kids differently and they had all boys. And the boys were talking about their feelings. For boys to talk about their feelings, you better have a safe place. And they were, and I was so proud of what they were doing. It just gave me the goosebumps. So we're doing some great things in this district.
One last comment.
Sorry, but I'm gonna chime in again. Going back to kind of what we've been discussing with this, I had the opportunity, and we all have now with Zoom, to go to some of the counseling advisory committees. So I was at Santiago's a couple of weeks ago. I think Sarah, I think you were there too. And we go to the breakout sessions and these are great. Our counselors and our teachers are involved and they're great. I got the most out of hearing from the students. And so the, the students from Santiago who were involved in this were, you know, they were, they were real. They were upfront, they were talking about the resources they, they have, but they, what, what they need and what they're experiencing. And it was so important to hear because again, we, we have to focus on the students. And I'll be, Centennial's is, I think in two weeks, so I'm looking forward to that. And I'm hoping that the students will be involved because those, we need to hear from the, the students with this and reach them where they're at, you know, not, not where we are. Thank you.
And in the same token, can we, next time, can we hear what's going on with our workforce? So how are we providing social emotional for our teachers, for our staff? And constantly checking on that. I, I know that we, Mary and I, as we went through the adult school with you, Dr. B, we did pass in through transportation. And I gave, I think they gave all their employees a wristband, correct, Lorena? And it was a green one. And on that green one, it had like a daily thing that you could do for social and emotional week. And I was impressed with that. So I'd like to hear what's going on and how we're also providing support for our staff. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearing. The 2021-22 Resolution Number 93 to the Devi interim school facility, interim, excuse me, school facilities on residential, commercial and industrial development pursuant to Education Code Sections 17620, 17621, and Governmental Code 66017. So the Resolution Number 80 will go into effect 60 days from April 12, 2022 to avoid loss of revenues needed for construction and reconstruction of school facilities. The district on April 12, 2022 adopted Resolution Number 81, a 30-day interim resolution putting the increased fees to effect immediately. A developer fee justification report supporting the new fee levels has been prepared by the district's consultant, its special district's financing and supporting the new fee administration. Interim resolutions are effective for 30 days only. Therefore, this second interim resolution is needed in order to keep the new fees effective until Resolution Number 80 goes into effect on June 13, 2022. The fees are used for construction and reconstruction of school facilities. Okay, so that would be a public hearing. All right, let's move on to number eight. Hannah, school board, I mean, sorry, where? Students, sorry, student board.
Thank you, Madam President. Centennial's prom took place at Curlic de Casa and sold around 1,000 tickets. On Monday, May 16, is Centennial's Commitment Day Parade. Centennial's holding their senior dinner dance on Friday, May 27. Corona High's prom took place on Saturday, April 30, at Santa Anita Race Track at the Serrona Club. On Monday, May 16, is their senior awards. On Friday, May 20, is CHS's Senior Sunset. And on Wednesday, May 18, is the seniors versus staff basketball game, which will take place in their gym. JFK's Enchanted Garden took, prom, sorry, took place on April 23 at the Santa Ana E-Belt Club and sold around 200 tickets. On Wednesday, May 25, the senior awards is taking place in Orange Hill. JFK's Grad Night is also taking place on Tuesday, May 31, at Disneyland. Norco High's prom took place at Santa Anita Serrona Club on April 23 and sold around 700 tickets. Norco High's Powder Puff Game is taking place on Friday, May 20. Then, on Tuesday, May 24, at the Hidden Valley Golf Course, their senior dinner dance is taking place. On April 25, RHS Rainforest Rumble Rally took place. Roosevelt's Prom took place on April 30 at the Phoenix Club and sold around 1,500 tickets. May 6, Roosevelt High School's Powder Puff Game is taking place. On May 17, Roosevelt is holding a launch to showcase their art classes and clubs creations. Then on May 20, the Grad Night is at Disneyland. Santiago's Prom took place on April 9 at the Arctic and sold between 1,300 and 1,400 tickets. On Friday, April 22, Santiago also held a talent show and had 13 amazing acts. Santiago's Grad Night is scheduled for Wednesday, May 25. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Did you enjoy your prom?
I did, I loved it.
All right. I'd like to back up a little bit. I, I did make mistakes. So on the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to address the board on this resolution? May do so now. Okay, thank you. So the public hearing is now closed and the Board of Education will consider the resolution later in the meeting. Okay, so now we'll do our board members' report. We'll start with Dr. Lala.
All right, good evening, everyone. First off, I would like to comment on the focus on students. Would we listen to what they wanted and what they need and what their experiences are? I have a videotape of a year ago where we interviewed in a webinar some eight to 10 students from, I think Roosevelt Eastvale, right? And three teachers across. And they're talking about, I think Dr. Simon was there too. They're talking about the experiences about the pandemic, focusing on the good and the bad and how they move forward and learning loss and learning gain. It was a good video, focus on students' voices. The next one is that I've been attending, I've been invited to, to attend the CAC, the group of parents who focus on learners with, with special needs. And I think it's, it's good if we can directly have a collaborative conversation with them. Just a suggestion, I think there's a lot of needs. If we really just listen to what the parents are talking about, there's so many needs for those learners with special needs that we need to pay attention to. I think it, it would be good if we can have a direct communication with the group. Just like what we did with some other groups, like English language learners. We cover that a lot, you know, we, we, we worked with, with before, before Carlos Flores. I forgot her name. Nivea, you know, we talk about that a lot and very involved. And so in fact, the CAC parents are talking about inclusive education. Maybe it's a call to the Department of Dr. Tompkins to look into that. Inclusive education as a step towards submitting the needs of students with special needs. And inclusive education, it's also inclusive, it also involves EL, it also involves LGBTQ and all those kids that have special needs. The third one that I wanted to talk about is that while we are preparing for a resolution on ancient Pacific American heritage, I think we should be looking forward for the Juneteenth, for the African-American. I know that I've communicated that and you're all planning to put together a resolution. I think it would be good for our community to pay attention to the English learners, the African-American parents, and a Juneteenth is be a good sign that we are paying attention to the challenges and successes that they face in our community. The other thing that I would like to call your attention is that the School to Watch program in California, where we keep talking about, we want to be number one, we want to be number one. And we want our scores to show that. But the School to Watch will show that because it's a state program that look into our programs and really have data to show whether they improve or not. And I don't have enough time, but, and, and think, lastly, that's it, right?
Thank you. Mr. Z, your turn.
Yeah, I'm gonna be brief because some of it, I was gonna talk on, we, we've already addressed. But I am gonna talk about Masonic Lodge. And I think there were like three or four things going on that night. So I think it was just Mary and I that went. And there were eight students that were selected. And every, and you can correct me, Mary or Sam, it seemed like every one of them talked about depression. I, I don't, I don't think there was one. Isn't that your recollection too? And, and we had a myriad of kids from every high school, from Orange Grove to Roosevelt, Santiago, Centennial, every, eight high schools. And they all talked about it. And it just felt like, okay, this, this is real. So I appreciate, Dr. B, your presentation. But I think I more appreciate Reggie's comment that this isn't a one shot. We need to, to be proactive and continue to be proactive. And I'll, I'll just, I'll end with this. The, the last student who spoke was a straight A honor student. I think he said he never got, even since second grade, never got anything below a B. But during the pandemic, he had two F's. And, you know, he was, he was lost. He was, I'm just using that as one of the examples. Of somebody who was absolutely a high achiever, expects the most from himself, but felt like he let himself down. Well, he didn't do it, the world around him did it. So I, I just want to make sure that we don't just use May, that we go into next year and the next, because it's, this stuff's gonna be with us for a while. So I'll, I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Mrs. Ibarra.
Yay, I'm happy I'm not to be, not last. We've had a very, very busy last two weeks since our last board meeting. And I was able to attend the D-LAC meeting, which is always very interesting to hear the voices of our parents. They're there with translators or their little headsets on, asking questions. They want to know how to get their kids to move forward. Also, I was able to attend the Art Expo. It was amazing at El Cerrito Intermediate. It was like I was walking in Disneyland. And I just want to give a special thanks to Mr. Marukin for working so hard with the teachers there and building all kinds of turntables. And I don't know what all he was doing there. Then something broke and then they called him. He had to go behind the scenes to fix it. And so thank you for doing that. Also, we've had a lot of choirs, Centennial Choir, Centennial High School Play, which Dr. Tompkins and I went to, they did a great, great play. Also, our buddy, what was the name changed to? Our Buddy Dance, our CNUSD Buddy Dance.
Best Buddy's Dance, yes.
Yes, the, the kids were having a great time at that. It's my first time going. Also, Elizabeth and I were able to go to PTA Convention on Saturday. And usually PTA Convention is about 5,000 to 6,000 people. And because of the restrictions that the convention center and the PT, National PTA had, there was only like about 700 people. But the classes we went to were, were very, very good classes. And I just want to thank Communications for all the long hours you put in. I know you guys run around to every single school to take videos and do everything. And I love the snackables that you guys are doing. Thank you, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ibarra. Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, Madam President. Fortunately, I was able to do most of my, my report during the superintendent report. So thank you. But there is one other thing that I want to focus on, on the mental health awareness and, and suicide. And, and there's a lot of multiple high-risk groups. And we try and do what we can and focus and help that. But in my medical practice, what I'm, I'm, we're starting to see is a growing risk factor emerging is perfectionism. And the last couple of years, we're seeing that. And so I want to make sure that we focus also on, on the, the group perfectionism. So we're talking about, you know, the AP students, the IB students, our all-league athletes, our highly successful musicians. We need to remember that because sometimes they're hurting as well. So I love the videos with the students. And I think we need to really do something, again, as Mr. Z mentioned, we, we need to meet them at their levels and, and, and just keep constantly working on mental health awareness. So, you know, that's a charge. And I love what we're doing and I love what was sent in the board mail, mail out. But there's so much more we can do. Couple of quick highlights. Saturday, May 14, is American Cancer Society's Relay for Life. And CNUSD always is a great standout there. And so that's at Santana Park. So hopefully we'll see the representation from the district. And the last thing I want to mention, this is a sad, but, but also silver lining is, you know, 2020, we lost three students, or three community members, Daniel Hawkins, Drake Reese and Jacob Vavasko. At that time, after that, that tragic accident, Temescal Heritage Foundation wanted to do something to, in the memory of these, these kids. So they wanted to start scholarship funds for each of the schools. And unfortunately, the pandemic prevented any fundraising effort. So they were not able to do that. But this year, 2022, would be the graduation years of the three boys. I'm, I'm sorry, I always get emotional, I apologize. But this is, this is just great news. The Temescal Heritage Foundation, at the last minute, was able to, to get together four $1,000 scholarships that are gonna be presented. One to Centennial, one to Santiago, one to Woodcrest Christian. And they're also providing a scholarship to Daniel Hawkins' sister, Sarah, for her nursing program. So I just want to really give a shout out to the, the people at Temescal Valley and the Temescal Heritage Foundation. Specifically, I want to acknowledge RandPac, a developer of Terramar Community, and RandCon, who opened a ranch RV and self-storage facility in Temescal with their generous donations. And so hopefully this is an ongoing thing to, in memory of these, these three young men. Thank you.
Thank you for that information and give them our sincere thanks for doing that. Okay, going back to El Cerrito, I'd like to shout out for Dr. Angel Mejico. She was instrumental in getting all these folks to come out. And also, the thing is that it was parent night, the same night. So there was thousands of people there. And I think a lot of the schools have been experiencing with the open parent nights where people are just ecstatic. were just ecstatic to come back. And so again, I like to thank my husband, too, because he did spend a lot of time over there with his friends on the campus and off the campus as well. And also to our friends who helped bring some equipment down for the thing is Steve and Danae Woods. And I like to thank them as well. Congratulations to the retirees that we did earlier this evening. In retrospect, they, in combination, had over 3,000 years of service. So that's just amazing. And we'd like to wish them well on their, on their journey to the next stage of their life. I also like to thank Dr. Gina Boster. I spent five days, my husband and I spent five days with her touring our district for our CTE program. Amazing, the things we saw. Cybersecurity, we saw digital presentations, we saw things that the kids are doing and actually excelling in. And so next year, we will continue to look at the new CTE programs. Like at Pollard, they will have a brand-new HVAC program, okay, working on air conditioning. CFIS, okay, is going to have a welding program. Okay, then the four, then Eastham, River Heights, and also, excuse me, Corona High School will have an Autotron, which will have a physical, digital program of a human body. So now they can use that in their health programs. Just amazing. And the last trip that we made, Mary, I, and Dr. B, is we went to the adult school and saw the final tie-in because this is the connection where the kids are getting from seventh to 12th grade an experience with CT. Remember that our focus is to make our students college and career ready. And so now we have this avenue for them. And the adult school is also seeking a new avenue, and they've also gonna institute this next year, which is a Health Strand. And in the Health Strand, they will have CNA certification, which means that these will be certified nurse aides. And then they can go on to Norco College, where they can get an LVN, and then eventually become an RN. And so that is the progress, what we're looking at here, because we need health providers. So we will be looking at that. But another thing that we learned from the adult schools, not only are they working with Norco, but they're also working with outside agencies to help provide social and emotional support for the parents. And so they're also working with the Parents Center as well as with other institutions to provide that, those services, as well as academic rigor. And thank you for that. And I want to thank Dr. Boster again, and all these great programs that we have out there for our kids. Thank you. At this time, Employee Association reports. So do we have someone from CNTA that would like to come and speak? Okay, seeing none. Okay, we see Lorena. Lorena, come up and speak on behalf of CSEA, Chapter 369.
Good evening, President Marukin, school board members, Dr. Buenrostro, and Cabinet. We have been working on an MOU, MOU for Todd Academy Transitioning to Elementary and our classified work-year calendars. Also, we will begin our re-opener negotiations in the coming weeks. We look forward to our continued collaboration with CNUSD. Also, this coming Friday, May 6, CSEA will be celebrating classified employees at Corona High School. We have invited all of you to come and celebrate our custodians, secretaries, office assistants, health clerks, library clerks, security attendants, maintenance workers, instructional aides, cafeteria workers, and information technology techs. We are the support staff at our schools and for our district, and we look forward to seeing you all there. We will be serving speedy street dogs. So there will be a different variety, churros and paletas. And we will be having, we will be raffling gift cards for CSEA members. And we hope that we have a great time. So I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorena. All right, at this time, we'll have public comment. So I'll read my little spiel here in a second. "At this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a meeting held in public and not a public meeting. Although the board will not respond to the speakers directly, either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact speakers or follow up with written communication. If multiple speakers address the same subject, I may request the subsequent speakers only to new addition." I'm gonna not continue to read that because we only have two. "And persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of those complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at the meeting. So please refrain from applauding after each speaker. The hearing session is now open." So we'll begin with Wendy Stevens Rodriguez on CRT and gender identification. So Wendy?
My husband and I don't have children. We live in Norco. We support these parents whose children are tomorrow's workforce and leaders. A woman asked Ben Franklin what they had when he finished the Constitution. He said, "A republic, madam, if you can keep it." Ronald Reagan said, "Liberty is never more than one generation away from extinction." Your students need to love their country and to see people not based on race, but on character, intelligence, and education and integrity. They need to know that the most important political office is that of the private citizen. If you are not teaching your students that, they are not becoming the good students this nation's, the good citizens this patient nation needs. Parents should be directly involved with their child's education. Any curricula besides math and spelling that doesn't teach that children are born XX or XY at any point in K through 12 should not be curricula. White children are not born racist. Blacks and Hispanic are not oppressed. If you say that, you are teaching them to be victims. In this country, they can choose to work and make the life they want. Dr. Lawless, I have watched your videos and read your resume. You are a proponent of critical race theory. I would not want my child in one of your schools. If any of you are proponents of CRT, I would not want my child in your school. America is already diverse. Focus on diversity and inclusion does not focus on character, integrity, and education. CRT is Marxism. You may say you are not teaching it. You can put as much lipstick on it as you want. Read Critical Race Theory on HillsdaleCollege.org. Words such as equity, social justice, diversity, and inclusion provide a camouflage. Any in favor of it should spend a little time in Cuba and see if they can live under those principles."
Thank you, Wendy. At this time, we'll have our next speaker, Haley Anderson Kozlov on the All American Boys book.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak up here tonight. I'm here to voice my concern about the newly district-approved novel, All American Boys. I'm currently a freshman at Corona High and was assigned to read this book in my honors language arts class. The evening before my class began reading the novel, my classmates and I were asked to discuss this novel with our parents and receive consent to read it in class. After looking into what this book was about, I chose to read the alternative book I was given, To Kill a Mockingbird. All American Boys was originally banned or restricted for drug use, profanity, alcoholism, and the promoting of anti-police views. It is a one-sided novel based on the false narrative that all police officers are racist. I feel like it has taught many of my friends and fellow classmates to villainize all police officers. Not only was I asked to read a novel based on extremely politically divisive topics, but I was called a racist, singled out in front of my classmates, and not even given an equal education as everyone else in my class. I was asked to leave the classroom three days a week for one month, and was given no instruction or teaching on the alternative novel, To Kill a Mockingbird. I was unable to engage in class discussion because my set of political beliefs did not align with this novel that was chosen to be read in my classroom. While I was the only, the only one to choose the alternative book, know that many of my classmates agreed with me on why this novel should be taken off the list of district-approved books. However, they did not want to undergo the same class experience that I had. Having law enforcement active in our communities, schools, and even family, I feel that this book is extremely offensive to them and teaches students to hate, challenge, and disrespect officers who keep our community safe. So I ask that the board reconsider's its decision to approve the novel, All American Boys. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. I appreciate that. So, on behalf of the School Board of Education, we thank you for your comments. And again, although the board will not respond to your concerns at this time, please be assured that all comments are taken seriously. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to consent items. Are there any questions, comments, or highlights on the consent items? Mrs. Ibarra? So we'll pull?
Yes, I want to pull 18A.
On page, on page 23, 18A. Okay. Any other pulls? Okay, so we have a comment, and what is that on?
Dr. Tompkins, you know, my, just a comment is that I've been watching the expulsion and all of that. It really, it really bothers me that every time since I've been on the board, that there's always that expulsion, use of force, or drugs. Can we make sure that sites are really telling their kids and really making a lot of educational effort to inform them to refrain from those activities? Can we, can we try to do so much so that many of them can get expelled or suspended and so forth?
Absolutely, Dr. Lawless. That's a part of that preemptive work that we're doing. Schools have revisited, going over discipline guidelines and expectations. They've revisited that later, later in the year than normally do at the beginning of the year, but they've done it again because they feel like they needed to do a reset. Because of just what we talked about earlier, some of the behaviors post-pandemic have been very, it rises to a level very quickly. And so we're really working on being proactive with that and to minimize those behaviors and those decisions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to add to that comment. As we went to Pollard and went to Orange Grove, and from the comments, we heard that some of the students that are sent there usually only stay a semester. They're actually staying to finish their, their high school experience because of the CTE program. Now they have something to look forward to, and they just can't work in the confines of a regular high school. And so I heard that twice. And I was just, I was really excited that they felt like they had a place, that they could be successful, and a program in which they could learn something that they could use once they leave high school. So I want to, again, another kudos to them. But also, by putting them in these places, sometimes it is a better place. And they get guidance and everything else as well.
Very important to find the best fit for some of our students that are struggling because they can excel in that environment with the care and the support that they need. Mrs. Marukin, I have a question. I have to pull one item for further revisit with my staff.
Yes.
15M.
15M, and that's on page? 15M is on?
On page 18.
18, okay. Okay, so we'll go there first, so.
Was that 15M as in Mary?
15M, yes, as in Mary.
Any, any other pulls? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go with the first one here first. Oh, we'll do all the consents first, okay? So exempt on M on page 18 and on page 23 on 18A. Do we have a motion to accept all the other consent items? Mary, second bill. Go ahead and vote. Hannah, I'm sorry. Go ahead and vote, please. She approves. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, thank you. So let's go back to, on page 18, let's go back to 15M. So, Mr. Tompkins, go ahead.
Yeah, 15. For 15M, we just, we want to pull it, and staff's gonna revisit that item.
Okay, so we'll table that. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to 23, page 23. Mrs. Ibarra?
I need to abstain.
Okay, so she needs to abstain. All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and... Do we need to vote on the sustain? Okay, so may I have a motion then?
Second.
Okay, so go ahead and vote. Hannah? She approves. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, we're going to go to page 23 at the bottom. We're gonna go to E here. And it is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the attached 2021-22 Resolution Number 94, implementing certificated layoff and terminating services of certificated employees as a result of reduction or elimination of child development programs services. So, Mr. Gonzalez, may you address this?
Thank you, Ms. American. So this is bringing back the second step in the item that was approved in March, where we, you approved the reduction of four positions. So we went through the process of identifying the employees in those positions. So this is the second step in that process. We did identify, we're happy to report at this time, we were able to place one of the employees in a position they were appropriately credentialed for. One of our employees did find work outside the district, so they resigned. We do have two employees that we need to notice. We are working with them on potential short-term permits that would allow them to continue working in particular positions. But that takes some time analyzing transcripts, going back and forth with the CTC on what exactly the short-term possibilities are for them. So we are under some timelines here and need to notice them properly of this, this reduction. So that's what this, this action would do this evening.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to accept?
Can I, can I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
No, I look into it some more. I look at CTC, and I ask colleagues who teaches special ed and certification. At this time, when, well, you're in HR, you know this better than me, to look for qualified teachers to teach special ed, pre-K, pre-to-third grade. And we are reducing instead of, and they've been with us for a long time, right? So they have the experience. It's almost like the issue raised by a teacher from Bauer, Victor's Bauer, where they're, I think, they felt that there's a ripple effect that they have the experience, but now they feel that they might, their position might be in danger, just like these two. And these two teachers that you identified were the ones who wrote us and explained what their backgrounds are. They have a master's degree in special ed, right? At least the other one had a master's in special ed, and they've been teaching. They argue that they're credential, they have the credential to teach. And that's what they've been doing. And I read the provisions of the position of early childhood specialist credential, that they can really provide instruction, teach courses in child development in grades K through 12, as well as early childhood education program in grades three One of the arguments they posed is that we can reduce the class size because it's very hard to work with learners with special ed because it's challenging. Is there a way of, again, maybe it's too late, but I'm arguing that these teachers have the experience, they have master's degree, they've taught special ed, and now we're reducing the force because we cannot find a placement for them. Is that accurate?
Yes. So there's a couple of things involved with this. One is the specific program that they have been working in, it has been reducing in numbers. The expansion of pre-K that the state is engaging in... The expansion of pre-K that the state is engaging in has transferred where the programmatic needs are. So, we see some of the students that previously were in that program, under those credentialing rules, moving to our pre-K programs that have different credentialing rules. So, it is our intention to continue working with our teachers to see what short-term solutions they may be available to them to teach, to continue teaching for us. That involves crafting a plan, having some commitments to furthering different parts of the requirement so that they are properly and appropriately credentialed for those programs that are, where the students are moving to. So, the issue is, we do have timelines that we have to meet in terms of noticing, so that's why the resolution's coming forward now, while we continue to do that work. And we do have a sincere hope that we can continue to find ways to employ them.
Just to let, you know, they have not contacted me at all. I just made sure that, and I voluntarily, they didn't even know I'm arguing for this. I just voluntarily looked at the CTC. They said it keeps changing, you know, from ECSE. Now, they have new teaching, teacher performance expectations, and that the title of ECSE might change again. So, you know, we're in that, a lot of different moving parts, and here we are, doing something to inexperienced employees, and they're being ripped or out of a job. And that concerns me. That's why I took upon my individual, you know, involuntary way to really...
Yeah, we've been in contact with both these employees. They know the resolution's coming forward tonight. They know of our intention to continue working with them.
With them, okay.
Thank you. So, at this time, can we have a motion? Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Hannah, your vote? She approves. Okay, go ahead and vote. Thank you. So, that has passed. So, we want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Before I adjourn, our next board meeting will be on May 17th, 2022, here at 7:00 PM. So, thank you for your time, and we'll see you again. We approved during the meeting?
Did you approve it? I seconded.
Okay, so he seconds. She approved, okay, so...
Approved.
Thank you. She approved. Thank you. Should we vote?
Yeah.
Should we vote? There we go. Thank you. Formalities, formalities.